Morning, everyone, and welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners' meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. At attendance, our board is complete. We have Commissioner Cherichello.
Morning.
Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
And myself, Commissioner Goddard. And we'll move right ahead to the RFP openings and awards inmate personal care items.
Move to authorize the superintendent to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Any discussion on this?
Regular operations.
Right, exactly. Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Opening.
Janitorial supplies.
Janitorial supplies. I think we're supposed to physically open these items.
I think that's which ones. You're right. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, that might.
Your weapon.
Trusty. All right, so I moved to, so I'll make the motion first as our starting point, and I moved to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Any discussion on janitorial supplies? Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Multi-clip, move on while. Unless you want to like me to just clear the. We don't typically announce where to come from.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
As long as they're open.
You wanna keep you on, we can multi-cast.
Sure.
All right, so the next is the pickup truck for the Sheriff's Department is also an opening. I moved authorize a high sheriff to review, evaluate proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Any discussion on the sheriff's pickup truck? Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay, also, next is epoxy flooring for long-term care dietary and jail facilities.
I move to award the proposal for epoxy flooring, long-term care dietary and jail to associate concrete coating LLC for an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Any discussion on this?
I just had a couple, I mean, a couple things. One, it is the lowest bid, which is good. We've worked with them successfully, so that's a great thing. I was just looking at the breakdown because, Jude, as I understand it, in projects, there was like essentially about ten thousand, sorry, I can't, I can't open up my support right now, my computer's not working, but about, from my recollection, about ten thousand apportioned in projects to, to the jail and eight thousand to long-term care for flooring. And the project total was sixteen, but the jail portion was like closer to eleven. Is that correct?
That's right.
And to pull some from the jail's flooring line.
This year's project.
Yes. Okay, and then, so we'll have a little extra in the project code for related to long-term care. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I was just.
You're invited.
Oh, okay.
Any further discussion?
Barely solidified in my brain.
Okay, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the October third, two thousand and twenty-four public meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, good.
All looked good.
Thank you, Leila, as always. Thorough and complete.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, next, we have the Human Resources bi-weekly recruitment report. Anyone want to comment on that report?
My takeaway was, it looks really encouraging where we, that we're picking up some LNA's. I mean, really, I, I think we've had an influx, and I don't know if, it seems like the, we're coming in on the turnaround time. And maybe you can, or Allison can speak to that, but I, I mean, when we look at where we're, what we're trying to achieve, we had a couple of LNA's, a couple of weekend, LNA weekenders, weekenders too, which is great because of, and then some, an apprentice or a couple.
There's a couple of, yeah. Definitely the quick apply. She's being unedited right now, like the volume is so high on that.
Oh, really?
It is. So that was all autumn.
Autumn. Well, I mean, that, what it, I mean, this is the ticket. It's like, because, and then when you look at the numbers coming in, and then the pipeline for starting in the, the twenty-first and the fourth, I mean, it's super encouraging. And then when we target. I was just saying, when we're targeting, we're looking at our numbers of like, our target number for this year was seventeen, and we are like, I mean, knock on wood, our pace, I mean, it's just really.
Yeah, I know that I've been working very closely with Allison and Autumn around just kind of what the practices are, what we can do. I know that on our side, we have given a distribution list to Autumn so that there's no delay with scheduling interviews on our side. We now have a list of people, so when she sends out for an interview, she's able to schedule right on the phone without having to call back.
Yeah.
And then it goes right on, and then on my side, that team is deciding who's going to do it that day, so that there's no calling back and getting rid of that step for Autumn. So that's been implemented. We, you know, the flyers, I think, Autumn did a beautiful job kind of putting together the benefits, which has had a huge kind of component for that. I love her idea about the Indeed Apply and those kinds of pieces of it. And then I did talk to her the other day, because when you go on Indeed, they fall, because as new ones come on, it falls to the bottom. Every thirty to forty-five days, we can go in and update it, and it bounces it back to the top. So she's going to go into some of the older recs to be able to do an update to get those higher up as well. So looking at some of those more strategic ways, and she's been really on top of kind of ideas and thinking on outside of the box things as well, so it's been helpful.
Just great.
And I just meant to mention on the LNA, I just, there is some steam on that, and it continues to be very engaging for her with that. So she's going to continue to kind of spearhead that, because that will add to it down the line as we're filling. Then we'll have more people coming into the pipeline as they go through their program, they'll all start at different dates, which is a good thing.
I, I, I'm looking at the list, and I'm really impressed with the numbers. We talked about recruiting stats from NeoGov, one hundred and twenty applications received. But really, I mean, like Correction Office, twenty-two people applied. That's awesome. Dispatch, twelve people applied. Legal assistance, nine. Recording assistance, twenty-four. So these numbers are significant, and it's recruiting the numbers game anyway. So I think that this is, this is very, very good.
The, the one thing I just want to circle back from last week on is like having the, having department heads do that initial intake. We talked about that, and I think that I, I'd like to implement that, because I think it's just very helpful, that initial screening, that we do the screening by each of the department heads. It takes a little bit of the onus off Autumn, who's already doing so much and really has a focus on LNA's. And it allows, I think, you know, some of that's already happening over in Corrections and, but I think it really, if we have the other departments doing their screening, I think they're the best situated for that, for that screening process.
Chantel, what do you think of that?
Yeah, I.
Do you have the time and?
I think within a team, we can, you know, I know for if Autumn was scheduling the interview and kind of having those pieces, whether it's with Sam or with our team, I think we have the resources and just like we did with the distribution list, especially where there is the increased influx that on our side, we can figure out a way to operationalize it and kind of do those pieces so that we can, I mean, right now, it really is a numbers game. The sooner we can get to them, the sooner we can get them in, and then sell them better. It's going to be to kind of get them in.
So can you coordinate with Autumn to?
And then, but not just that doesn't, you know, aside from long-term care. Jason, you're already doing that. Jude, do you have a thought about that? Do you know, would you care to play in as well?
I think absolutely, yeah, we would be willing to do it. We have the capacity, assuming that we know exactly the kind of things Autumn likes to screen for on her first conversation. We could certainly take the ball from there and then get into the more technical aspects of, you know, shift technician or plumber or electrician, what have you. We would certainly be happy to help out, yes.
Yeah.
That's great.
It's great.
Reduces the burden on Autumn, and it speeds up the process.
Correct.
I think this is a dynamic situation, and we should respond each week or each month as things are changing to do whatever we can. And obviously, we're trending in the right direction, and that's all good news. Everyone's doing a good job. I think it's a team effort here.
It has been a team effort and like great.
And the nursing recruitment part, that was next on the list. It's kind of the same. Anything unique about that, that we should be?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cherichello.
Thank you. Just looking at the recruiting activity for the LNA, MNA, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned the, the amount of people that we were pre-screening and then the end result, and I made a comment that there was zero, and so that's the ROI was zero. But now this one here, I've got six pre-screened, and I got three offers accepted. That's great. That's a fifty percent return. So whatever we're doing, if there was any changes, that's, that's exactly what I want to say. So good work.
Just as a practical matter, we should be, so Allison, can your team send those applications? Well, how, like, we just need to work out the mechanics to make sure that.
They already get them on the your app, so they're part of, they get those already. That's part of the. I just want to just mention that there's one element of Indeed that we implemented that's for recruitment only, where she can put out an email, kind of like we did the bio, you know, mechanical things of the IP. So she does some cold calls, and she gets applicants that way, and she screens them right there. That's how we got our plumber. We didn't get it on Indeed. We did it, we didn't get it through NeoGod. We bought it through Indeed, which is allows her to go out, and she gets so many applications that she's able to cold call like through direct emails to them. It allows them to direct email them. That person gets to accept, whether they'll accept it or not. And when they do yes, she calls them, she can then, it discloses her to a phone number, and she can then reach out to that person.
But so.
We want her to still be able to do that.
When she, or when she says, when they say yes, forward it to the department head.
Well, she's already on it. Typically, she's already in an email with them. She's already emailing them, and they're already calling.
To me, that's important, the tidying side of that is important, because you want to touch these people like as fast as possible. Like in my world, people will call, and if you don't respond, they're on to the next. So the faster someone can respond, the better.
She's doing the cold call. It's not, it's not a cold call. It's an email engagement, and then she does the screening right away. She catches.
So perhaps the easiest thing is to CC the department head on that email. I mean, so that everybody is, like, that's an easy way without, and then, but, and then the question is, like, just from an applications, how does it work? To actually look at the application. So each department that says access, full access to all of the applications.
So they all come in and.
You get an email.
June and Rich will get a notification in their box, and they're able to access and see it immediately.
So it's like, for instance, like, Jason, do you get that application, or Jude, do you guys get those applications?
I do. When, when indeed, all the applications come to us, and we're able to open them, look at, look at the application, and see if they're even appropriate to bring in for an interview, and then we are able to call immediately on that individual.
I think we were able to see them as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Because Rich, Rich has called over.
All right, now, yeah. The point is, I just want to make sure it's, I mean, it's just mechanics to think about so that we can streamline it.
Yeah, yeah, just a little bit. Thank you very much. So the only, the only other side of it's the LPN and the RN. We didn't, we didn't really snag anybody there in that timeframe, was from June twentieth to October tenth. I know there's an interview scheduled for the ten fifteen, and one of the comments was paid too low for applicant. I, I don't know about the RN, though. The RN, there was no, there was nothing.
So the LPN that they had the interview was a no-call, no-show.
Okay.
They did not come on, but the pay, we're assuming it's a pay, but they also didn't come through. They were very available, and Autumn was over there for the interview. The RNs, what we're getting is, it's two things. They don't want to be in the geriatric population, or it's the pay. It's okay.
And then just, as I recall, that I guess we'll be in union contracts soon for the nursing side of things.
And we're, yeah.
Okay, so then you guys, I won't be here, but you guys can obviously review where you need to be if that's a concern, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, outside of that, I, I think it's, this is a lot better than last.
Good job, everyone.
Yeah, really, it is.
Thank you.
Takes a village.
Sure does. Okay, let's move on to the ten seventeen accounts payable list.
I move to approve the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four accounts payable list total of three million three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
Discussion. And all looked.
Yeah. Pro forma. Yeah.
State bill.
State bills, I know. Exactly. That takes up half. We have, you know, prime care, we, the big ticket items.
I agree.
Agency, our, but grand, prime care.
Agency.
Agency.
That's what I kept seeing.
I know. So when you, yeah.
But we're, we're working on it.
Taking it out, you know.
Okay, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
And I say yes. All right, we'll move to the Commissioners' updates. Anybody have an update they'd love to like to share?
Oh, just, I'm going to just say, like, everybody did a great job with their scarecrows. It's such a nice thing to go out and see. It's such a nice thing for the, for the residents to, you know, when they're, yeah, I see the residents taking their laps in the parking lot, and it's a nice, it's just a nice holiday activity. The, I noticed also just from, like, to Jude's team, how beautiful the entry looks with the moms and the new rug at the entryway. Everything looks really beautiful, and it gives a great appearance to the community. So thanks to everybody for all their efforts for participating in the, the scarecrow contest, as well as Jude, your team, for getting them up as well, and the display.
Sam has had everything to do with that entrance, actually. He's done a terrific job.
It looks beautiful. It really does.
He's great.
I have a couple of items. The first one, I've, I've been getting a solicitation from Simbotic, Lauren Karp from Simbotic, who is asking for our W nine as if we are a vendor, and her explanation is that we are a supply chain robotic company that needs permits through the county in order to install our system in the Walmart warehouse.
Sounds like a scam.
Yeah, it doesn't sound right to me either.
Control D.
So I'm thinking that I should just delete that. Yeah. Yeah, that's what it sounds like. I, I mean, we're not a vendor. I know what W nines are for.
Also, we don't deal with the Walmart distribution service.
Right. Okay, so the other, the other thing that I've been made aware of is a telephone call that was made
Oh, yeah, which was correct, too.
Joyce Craig.
Yeah.
Our, our vendor, Mr. Weep from Revision is requesting that he be allowed to bring Joyce Craig for an inspection to inspect the progress. Dan Weeps is a political operative. He works for Joyce Craig. He works for Democrats. I've pulled out a couple of items from his LinkedIn page, which I'm sure you guys can access directly if you want to. He's done this before. Here's the one for Joyce Craig that he did in Nashua. It, this is a political campaign stop for Joyce Craig that he's trying to arrange. And I think that it's inappropriate that the county would be used for this purpose. If a private corporation wants to do that, as they have in the past, that's perfectly fine, but I intend to, during new business, I have a letter that I just shared with other Commissioners, essentially denying him permission to do that next Wednesday. He was specifically asked for. I just think this is inappropriate, and so I'm sharing with the Commissioners what I found.
What was very, I guess the one thing I think you're not, you're misrepresenting with respect to his call, and he said he was reaching out to Joyce Craig and Kelly Aot to come look at the, so you're, I mean, he was very clear in his voicemail that this was a nonpartisan event to tout our solar, you know, what, that we're pioneers in the solar project. So I don't think, I mean, he, he's not, it's not that he's precluded from having a political position, but he was very clear, and then we can even play the, the audio, which says Kelly Aot, Republican candidate, was included in this, so.
Wow, okay.
And so for you to just say, I mean, it just completely, this letter completely misrepresents what he said in his invitation list.
It did clearly say that Revision was nonpartisan, and this was not a, well, no, I didn't forget exactly.
He invited, that he was inviting Kelly Aot.
Well, he invited Kelly Aot to his office, not to the county, to see the construction. I know that, because I spoke with the Kelly scheduler this morning. And, yeah, well, he didn't, he hasn't set up anything. With disregard, I believe he's misrepresenting his position to us, that this is a political campaign stop that he wants to promote. Personally, he's working for Joyce Craig. He wrote an editorial for her in the Union Leader. Although Revisions, he was, he was very clear that Revision did not have that, share that position. I just don't believe that it's appropriate that he be allowed to, to do that. I don't think it's a benefit to us. She doesn't need to see the, the progress, not involved. I, that's, he asked if it was okay, and I'm suggesting that it's not okay.
My turn?
Sure.
Yeah, I listened to the message as well. What I heard was he did invite Kelly Aot, but I don't know what that consists of. Like, did they return the call? I don't know. All I know is, is Joyce Craig was coming. He also invited Kelly Aot, so I just don't know what that entails. I too have a concern that it could, I have nothing against Dan Weeps at all, and if he wants to do whatever he wants to do on his own time, that's fine. But I don't want it to be used as a political, a political stop. I don't think it's right. I may handle it a little bit differently. The way I would handle it is if you want to show Joyce Craig or Kelly Aot, you do it after the election. That's my opinion.
Wow.
I, I have no problem showing, showcasing it. Just do it after November fourth.
When it's not a campaign stop.
That, that's, that's where I'm at.
I mean, you're, I think it's like, we're injecting values into, we, I mean, we should ask him. I mean, you're, we're making assumptions about what it is, and I don't think that's a fair and appropriate. Like, I think clearly, and that's by virtue of the fact that he did, it wasn't, it was a nonpartisan touting solar. I don't think it's, I mean, I just don't think it's that, so.
I think is, the way he's presenting it is not representing his position.
Well, he's allowed to have personal political views.
He does.
Like, he, so, but just because someone has a personal political view, doesn't mean that they're, by virtue of the fact that it's a nonpartisan invitation, then, like, you're allowed to have your personal views and still comport yourself in your, in, you know, in terms of your job function.
He can, but I don't believe he is.
But that's your personal belief.
Well.
So that's not personal belief.
He's, that's right. It is.
So we, you know, I mean, like, if your position is, like, let's operate with data, then let's talk to him, but otherwise, it, like, what's, I mean, it's not going to be this, if he wants to show, you know, showcase solar in a way that is like, hey, this is, this is a wonderful opportunity for municipalities in a bipartisan way that everybody should be considered. This isn't a political, the solar array had bipartisan support in this county because it was good for taxpayers. It's good for every, it's a win-win for everybody.
It is, great.
So why not be on the forefront from a county perspective, on, on the forefront, and getting the both governor can contend, candidates involved so that this is something that we can be the leaders on through the state?
Well, my opinion is that because they're going to come and take pictures and use it as a campaign stop, and I'm going to guess.
Again, you keep.
I am, I am guessing. You're right. So if they're not going to take pictures and bring signs like they did in Nashua.
That's why we.
And with Maggie Goodlander, he did the same thing. I, I, to me, it walks like a duck. It's a duck to me, you know, it's a campaign stop.
Arguably, you're making the same political calculus in making.
No, I deny Kelly, too.
I mean.
Yeah, well, then.
Yeah, I don't want Kelly here either for that, because I think it's inappropriate as a campaign stop.
So you and I are aligning in our thoughts. It's, you want to do it after the election?
After the election would be not a campaign stop.
I mean, that's, I mean, I, I'm fine with that, and I, and I'm, the words that you use are appropriate as well. The only thing is, is you know, getting to where we were had nothing to do with either Joyce Craig or Kelly Aot, to be frank. They have nothing to do with the solar array. And we, I don't think we should be using it as a political, yeah, we should be proud of it and what we've done, and, you know, I get that, but I, I feel the same way. I feel like it should be, you know, you want to do that, that's great. Do it after the election.
Great. Okay, so that's our Commissioner updates. I think we can move on from that at the moment. And we'll go to Department of Corrections inmate administrative transfer.
Move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, transferring one inmate from Stratford County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty that the call in twenty-one is recommended by the superintendent.
Any discussion on the inmate transfer?
It's part of our statutory obligations.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, facility operations, bid waiver request, ESL distributing.
Yes, I move to approve the ESL distributing LLC proposal and sole source bid waiver request in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for ongoing security enhancements to the rehab, habilitation, and nursing center as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Any discussion on this bid waiver?
This is great. It's going to add more security for D one, so we can, I mean, we have this ongoing need for, for memory care, care.
It opens up another way.
And the memory care waiting list has historically been very long in this county. I mean, there is just a shortage in the private sector, you know, a huge demand here, so anything we can do to help enhance offer options for memory care residences, that's a wonderful thing as I see it.
Okay, Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right. Another bid waiver request for Morse Watchman.
I move to approve the Morse Watchman proposal and sole source bid waiver request in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars to have a key box in the facilities office to ensure continued security and efficiency as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT, IT manager.
Second.
Any discussion on this bid wave?
Just in a general sense for bid waiver, these are because they're sole source, and we're already, they're compatible with, with infrastructure we are.
And it's not that much over, because we only have to approve over ten thousand, so this is not a big deal. Okay, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, moving to the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant.
I move to approve an application for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant for an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Any discussion on the block grant application?
Help offset costs for the solar array.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a grand.
Well, happy to accept the funds. Okay, Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
The Edward Burns Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, additional document.
I move to approve the additional documents to be submitted for the two thousand and twenty-four Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and authorize the acting chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second. Second.
Any discussion on this?
I just want to disclose that I'm also, and I think that I'm disclosing this, I think probably um. Commissioner Chirichello needs to disclose as well because um I I sit on the, I'm a Portsmouth Police Commissioner. And because this involves both Portsmouth Police and actually uh probably Commissioner Chirichello has the same issue. As a city, as a counselor for Derry that. Because it's like both ends of the coin now, this is mutually beneficial to both the county and it's sort of a path through the county for. Portsmouth Police Department and Derry Police Department, but. In the air of transparency and um so everybody's aware, I do sit on the Portsmouth Police Commission. I don't think I need to recuse myself unless anybody else because um it's mutually beneficial. But I think we, I have a duty to disclose that for both my, you know, everyone here, the commissioners as well as the public.
Yes, I'll I'll agree. Um, I I do sit on as a Dairy Town Councilor as well. Looks like this grant is basically looking at. Um, communities of a certain size which Portsmouth and Derry both qualify for. Um, I'm not gonna recuse myself because I have nothing to financially gain out of that. Um, it's just something that we, that's that's typically, if we can get a grant through the through the county, that helps the towns, that's fine.
Okay, I don't have anything to disclose. I'm not a, I'm not a dual commissioner anyway. Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chirichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, human resources, evaluation of options for onsite occupational health services. This is a discussion. Um.
But Allison.
Allison, would you like to lead that discussion?
As you know, our C O E H contract is ending in December um without not a lot of notice. Um, and it has kinda pushed us to consider how we're going to can do, continue either onsite or going offsite. And um I am for clicking that onsite services. As you know, we did do a uh R F P a number of years ago. And we only had two vendors at that time, uh C O E H and Concentra were one of them. Um, so we did get a notification from uh the manager, the director over at C O E H that I work with. Which is Kathleen Lawrence, who provided me with some information about potential um. Vendors that might be available to us, Concentra being one of them, and Occupational Health Services as a secondary one. So we spent, I spent much time with Occupational Health Services, talking with them. And we spent a considerable amount of time with Concentra, talking to them about what services we're looking for and what that needs to be. I've outlined in a memorandum, the pros and cons of both Occupational Health Services is really just a placement firm. They're just gonna place somebody into our existing uh facility. But then we even have to go and have individual contracts for all of the other services that Occupational Health does. Which is laboratory, X ray, all of those other services that we would have. Um, in talking with Occupational Health Services, um, they don't offer benefits or anything to anybody that they hire. It's really just a pay, they're paying a a wage. So there's no backend for those people that they provide um placement for. And um so that was what what I learned from Occupational Health. Uh, C O E H, we pulled up their contract from twenty thirteen, we went through that contract with them and then we did the proposal. Um, they're still in the business, uh very healthy business with onsite services. Um, they do have uh a robust service that they can offer us. Um, they would take on uh the current person that is not gonna have a job with C O E H as well. Um, if they're mutually agreeable to do that, they do have benefits because they look at this as a full service employment. With their their personnel that they place in onsite. And provided you with some of those uh in the contract with uh Occupational Health. Connections was really like a one pager and I went back to them and did a whole contract to sit. To ask them to consider this type of language. This is what we'd be looking for if we went forward. Um, we don't have a contract language with Concentra. We have their proposal because it will be depending on the proposal. Um, Chuck and I did have a final call. Um, I asked Chuck to step on to talk about the financial aspects of Concentra. If we're gonna go that way, um because I think it was interesting, we both have the same thoughts on certain areas of the contract. And I just wanted a little leverage from a financial person on that call to see. And they have um revised their contract yet again um in the first year uh with no touches, a little bit lesser. And then the second, what they're asking for is a second year of the contract if they're going to come on, just for continuing, you know. Continuity and getting somebody in, and then that'll give us time to evaluate overall list of services. And if you wanna continue to engage in this a year from now.
So I noticed that one of the proposals was uh occupational health, I think was to place uh physicians assistant here. At the uh at our facility. Is there any consideration for us to hire a physicians assistant and then just send out labs? As uh necessary, you know, circumventing the the cost of employing the outside service, is something we can pull inside?
We can do that. Uh, we can look at that alternative. Um, and it's not something I haven't thought about. It is, it would be adding a position onto our list, uh getting it into a a paid plan uh where we think we could have that. We would still have to do contracts with lab services, contracts with the hospital to do any potential X rays. We want something that has um occupational health. Um, that's physicians assistants that has a certification occupational health. Because they do do that workers comp piece for us as well on occasion and they're able to help us with our second injury fund. Um, we would probably want to also just have a contract in with the medical director because if you do um drug screens and they come out. We'd wanna make sure that person has somebody that they, that that stuff, information would go to um before it goes back to. Uh, to be a a biased and unbiased party to that. So there are, it would be just a different contracts that we'd have to do. Could it be done? Yes. Could it be done in the time span of December? No, not necessarily because. What I did hear from Occupy Concentra, um they have a ninety nine month. Uh, excuse me, ninety day bandwidth to, if we didn't have somebody, they couldn't come in. They try to come in within the ninety days, but they would have a ninety day bandwidth to find somebody in the market that would come on. As an employee in that type of role. And the market is pretty hot for those types of uh physicians, nursing. Physicians assistants and stuff like that. It's still hard to come by, but we could potentially do that.
And you question, yes. One, how much are we paying? What is the contract price right now? So I guess for C O E H. Because how much are we going up by? Going forward?
Well, if if we had like a, you know, if we're saying there was gonna be a three percent increase if we stay with. You know, C O E H, that brings it to just about the amount that uh health connections is offering, but not as many features.
Okay.
So, you know, yes, the amount that Concentra is asking for is, would be more. Than what, you know, again, you know, putting in like an imputed like three percent, but again, you know, there's only so many players out there. And to be said that Concentra, there's, they're more, you know, instead of relying on one, you know. Company right now, C O E H, they have a broader, you know. Uh, they have greater bandwidth to pull someone from the fill in, a whole new, more stable, they've been in the business for a while. They're not gonna just pull out like C O E H.
And I guess my, I guess sort of to similarly to Commissioner Gaddu's question. I mean, outsourcing this is three hundred thousand dollars annually, give or take, right?
It wasn't.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at um Concentra's contract. I mean, we're using like right brain math, um but um. Uh, three hundred thousand for the second year of the contract, right? We a hundred and forty, it's a hundred and forty four thousand to year end and then three hundred for next year. So I guess um I'd be interested in understanding. I mean, there's two separate and distinct issues, right? What do we do for the next seven months? And then what do we do for the following year, right? And I, because we need a plan, we need a stopgap or some, a plan for the next seven months. My question is. Should we, at a cost of three hundred thousand dollars, what is the, like doing some analysis of? Either bring someone in ourselves or, you know, sending out. The cost differential as it relates to comparative, a comparison to this three hundred thousand dollars as a price point. Instinctually. It seems like it might be less costly to employ, employ someone. To handle those things and outsource labs, but it's hard to know entirely without, you know, a little more data. So I. My suggestion is when we look at this, we look at this, cause we need to take some action fairly quickly, right? Um, and my, another question I have is what do we have budgeted for the rest of the year on this?
So here's partially the good news that these expenses would fall under with internal service funds, the workers comp fund.
Yeah.
Which has very healthy fund balance.
Okay.
So of like over three hundred thousand dollars. So actually, no, wait, we're not, sorry. It's it's like three million, so it's 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 pretty good over there.
So my.
Um, one thing too, I don't. The independence factor because you're doing medical.
Yeah.
That, I don't know if there's a tangible value.
I know.
As far as that's not accounting for, just making the call and certain thing, I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I know. It's like, that is like a.
Liability.
Perhaps unintended consequence of doing, making a change here. How does that impact our overall insurance? But um I think, you know, what I feel like is we should make a decision for the next seven months to keep us secured and then. In that, just take a little extra time and evaluate what. You know, like, get some data on cost and see if there are alternatives. But.
Yeah, I I mean, I, I'm only gonna give two months, so I don't really feel comfortable in making any long term decision. I would recommend that maybe if possibly you can wait till Tom Tom Berlino comes back, if he's reelected. Um, so we can make that decision which way you guys wanna go. Like I said, I don't feel comfortable in. Participating in decisions that are gonna affect next year, um when I only have a few months to go. The other thing is, is if you, if you bring in an employee, I'm sure you'd have to have the delegation approve that.
Correct.
So that's just another concern you need to need to think about, but I'm just throwing that out there as an FYI, that's all.
So um. The option of bringing in an employee, the 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 big hurdle that I heard was that they need to be certified for workers comp. That sounds like a certification that's not widely uh available with. P A's where we could probably find a P A to come in uh for a reasonable salary. But might not have that certification. So my question is, if we did that. Can we outsource the workers comp portion of 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 that?
Workers comp, yeah, so workers comp is already out there. Anybody can go to any of our managed care network. But if we have somebody in house here that got injured and they don't have a provider, they've typically gone to our uh Occupational Health Services for that. And they've been the attending physician for that. So we can, we don't have to have a P A. We can have a nurse practitioner because they can write scripts and do all of that stuff. That's what Monica is right now. She's a nurse practitioner. So it's not workers comp, it's occupational health. So it's a different type of, you know. Piece, but the workers comp, anybody can go anywhere, but on occasion, we have some of our staff that use that. And they can still do that as a nurse practitioner. They can still see them as that. Um, so, but it just. I don't have either way. Uh, we just know that I have to do something because we're not gonna have any. We cannot send anybody for any blood work or process anything, request after November twenty fourth, I think. We're done over on C O E H, so I have to get something in place.
So what's the consequence if we don't have somebody in house right here?
The consequences is we don't do the employment physicals, we don't do drug screens, we don't have. You know, it helps with our absenteeism. We have a lot of folks that don't wanna tap into their deductible on their health insurance. So they use that as a onsite pain for small, small things that they've been able to do. Um. Some people go to her for different things, um.
Okay, so this person that's here currently, she interested in working for us?
She would stay on, yes.
Well, as a stopgap, does it make sense to just hire her as a direct employee?
We'd also have to get the contracts in place for medical oversight and for lab work.
Okay. That doesn't seem overwhelming.
And again, approval from the delegation.
Yes.
Right.
I I I I'd like to see a little bit deeper dive into behaving in that manner. Rather than going for an outside operation if 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 we think that we can handle it all. Internally, I think we'll be in better shape.
So we have to put something in place within the first or second week with contracts. If we're gonna do something for our labs and stuff, we have to get involved with quest lab or lab core. Generate some of those contractual things because I have to have those in place to do something. Um, she is no longer gonna be with C O H as of, I think, December seventh or ninth, so her, her employment ends then. So she wouldn't be able to stay on in any employment with us after that. Um.
But we can't hire her directly?
Um, we would, we don't have a position, so we'd have to.
Well, yeah, we have to generate all. I I understand that, but I'm just thinking from a practical standpoint, if she's interested in staying. We ought to do the work to try to keep her to stay, unless you don't like the work she's doing.
But I just was going through this.
And that makes sense.
Why don't we do some, let's reconvene on this topic next week. Let's try to get some data about, I mean, the practicalities of syncing with a lab. And some of those other mechanical questions. We may or may not be able to. Get this, it may be that we can't, um. We may not be able to get those things, but you know, we have a lot of resources from what we've seen from, and you know, I don't know, Shentel, do you have any? Like, do you have any connections perhaps or, um, so, I mean, I know a lot of people that I could reach out to. I know that we have a team of five, looks five openings, we have four providers, we're contracted with two different companies. And we have a doctor in house four days a week that I wonder, we could look at maybe expanding some of the contracts on the nursing home side. For one of those doctors to be the oversight doctor where they're in the building weekly. As about, we do have a lab that comes in, one of the barriers to that would be they come in at like very early times. Um, and run those pieces, but we have a contract with Elliot Lab that runs all of the labs for the nursing home side of things. Um, and they have a portal that you can look up and I already have contacts for that that I'd be happy to pull and share with you. Um. From that and Elliot Lab, I know down, I don't know over here.
It's just away.
Much it is, but I know they have, um, Elliot is part of Solution Health though, they um. With Southern, but that's still, I don't know how far up they go, I guess. I mean. But I'm happy to share any contacts on our side of the house that may help you. That'd be great. That's great, yeah, because I mean, what we're seeing here is like objectively in some areas, we're trying to move away from contracts. Because contracts are so much more costly as we found out. So if there is an opportunity. Maybe we can make some lemonade.
Okay, then then we'll.
Be next week with perhaps like maybe have a little more data. It might not be viable, but at least let's, let's explore so we have as much data as possible. As I said.
Okay, so next week. Sounds good. All right. Exception request for long term care services.
I move to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy seven dash four, wage increases for long term care employee K M as recommended by the Human Resources Manager. And Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this. But which position is uh she covering for? That.
Well, it's just part of the. Integration, we're, I mean, I guess so we haven't filled the um assistant director of long term care services, right? So we made all these decisions with the reorg- the reorganization. And so there's still a lot of openings in those positions. Um, so I think really what this is, is like some. Individuals taking on added responsibilities tied to all those open positions.
Okay, so there seemed to be an ending date, like we're approving for, I don't know, six, seven weeks, right at the moment.
I think.
What's the plan?
That's.
When we get to the end of that?
Yeah. So um there's a handful of items that through the opening in that position um that different individuals have carried. I'm currently not at a place because the items that are being carried by those team members are incredibly regulatory heavy. And I'm still learning the system. One of them, for example, is our compliance program. I've had initial meetings with the company, but.
I'm still learning kind of how it's implemented and going to have that impact here. So I currently. Um, when I met with H R about it, um, I wanna obviously be fair to the employees. I don't want things to fall apart. And we talked about having an end date because, you know, at that point, I may have more knowledge, may have better understanding of the systems. And better way to kind of analyze, look at it, even some of those that may maybe even I would have the bandwidth to be able to say. I could do this or look at the system. Unfortunately. Humbles me to say I'm not at a place that I could take on those items because they are very regulatory compliant. And I would hate to take them on and not be able to do them efficiently. And then it causes a bigger issue to kind of have to backpedal out of. Um, so in doing that, these employees are doing those pieces and keeping it moving to keep us in that compliance. Um, but I didn't want to do an open ended one because I wanted to be mindful of the fact that it needs to continue to be evaluated. And see what a plan is for most sustainability standpoint.
And we haven't filled that compliance position. I mean, Jason had that compliance position.
Been open for a while.
Yeah, so. Thirty days in, thirty.
Yeah, I just have a quick question because I'm reading the exception request here. It says the second period is September fifteenth through November second. So we're going retro basically, right?
I believe stipends were in place and they had already ended at that date. So.
At September fifteenth?
The individuals were getting stipends prior and these would just be renewing or extending the stipend.
To November second? Okay, all right. I was just a little little bit lost because the, you know. September fifteenth was the last month, so okay, all right, thank you.
Any other discussion? I think that we're good to move on this vote. Uh, Commissioner Churchill? Commissioner Coyle? And I vote yes. All right, another exception request on the same topic.
I move to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash four wage increases for a long term care employee. E W as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Any discussion? This is the same issue. No, okay. Uh, Commissioner Coyle? Commissioner Churchill? And I vote yes. Uh, another exception request.
Move to approve uh an exception request personnel policy seven dash four wave increases for long term care employee J C as recommended by the human resources manager. And Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Any discussion here?
This is separate and distinct. This is related to training um for um for CPR certification. So this is wonderful. I mean, it's great to have in in-house resource.
Hundred fifty dollars for her class and you know, somebody announced to do it. Yeah, very good. Okay, any other discussion?
No, just that I'm gonna abstain because it goes through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and I'm not gonna be here, so I think I'll feel right voting for it, but. Just to give you a heads up.
Okay. Commissioner Coyle? Commissioner Churchill? And I vote yes. And sign on bonus.
Move to approve a sign on bonus for the chief operator W T F dash W W T F position in the amount of six thousand dollars. Uh, breakdown of twenty five hundred at four months, two thousand dollars at eight months and fifteen hundred dollars at twelve months. As recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Okay, so discussion on this.
I was just gonna say on the discussion side, this is what we are advertising for the sign on bonus or are we creating a new a new sign on bonus?
This is creating a new one. For the chief wastewater operator.
Okay, and this was something that was obviously negotiated?
No, it's a Jude and I have talked about it. This is a critical operational position. They're very hard to come by. And so she's trying to kind of get it out there and uh try to see if we can get some hits on this.
This is an open position.
Coming open, yes.
And you you feel that we're not gonna be able to attract somebody without the sign on bonus?
It's a very specialized field, um, a lot of certifications and licensing to it. It's it's a tough position.
The position's been posted for nearly a month when the um existing person gave their notice. And we've had no viable bites at all.
My concern was actually in this case, my concern is it's six thousand and not.
I'm gonna start somewhere.
Give the six dollar a shot. If it doesn't work, come back. No, because it's just a book advertising bonus, so.
I didn't know, so it was, I just messed with her.
All right, so on adding the sign on bonus to this uh position, Commissioner Coyle? Commissioner Churchill? I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to department head updates. Allison.
Good morning. Uh, Allison, Senior Director of Human Resources. We've been kind of breast cancer awareness. We have the table represented by. Penny Remick from uh Health Watch and um. Uh, Martha Lee McGowan, our occupational health uh P A is there, nurse practitioner. Uh, we have had the years of service, um, just validating everything, getting the certifications pins ready. We've done the tables. We had to get all that information over yesterday. Um, just a little spike in a lot of personnel, you know, things going on that have kept us pretty busy and hopping over on our side of the house this week. That's all we have. Thank you.
Okay, Chantel.
Hi, I'm Chantel Jaconan, Senior Director of Long Term Care Services. Our census is one hundred and thirty three on the nursing home side, forty seven on assisted living. The assisted living has no COVID for staff or residents. The nursing home side has one staff, no residents. Um, a couple of general items, so just working on working closely with H R on hiring staffing and kind of those systems. As well as just other systems. Our assisted living does have the heightened um scrutiny survey that I had shared with Commissioner Coyle. Which is just a standard survey um because of being attached to the assisted living. So looking at that. We had our Medicaid training for a large portion of our team um last week, which another company was kind enough to provide. A lot of good information, a lot of opportunities around systems identified and additional trainings um to fill some of those gaps. So that's ongoing. Working on wrapping up the R P for the dietary and the affiliation for um the clinical overseas coast to have that. And then very excited to say that our nursing home um won and accepted um for memory care network of excellence. We're one of three. Who have it. Um, so the team recreation and Chris, so Ken and Chris worked very closely on that. Um, they were changing it and were part of the pilot and actually developing the program. So um, rocking counting is one of three that currently holds it.
Wow, that's really amazing, especially, you know, when we're competing, that's a competition against private. Private sector.
It's amazing and they should be. Well deserved.
Okay, thank you very much. Chuck?
Um, as usual for the month on a quarter end, still busy with grants, whether it's applications, obviously, uh, reporting. Uh, and uh, let's see, we're also, Molly and I will be meeting with the superintendent. Um, their director of programming and also Kevin Warwick um to do a uh. I think one of Kevin Warwick's um coworkers or another contact person. We go to some grant possibilities, so we'll have a call, I believe, next week, next Thursday or Tuesday. To go over that. Um, let's see, A T A C executive committee meeting and officers meeting. Is tomorrow morning over in Concord at the Crimics Building. And just reminder that next Friday, October twenty fifth, nine thirty morning over here at the Hilton Oxford, there's the delegation. Executive committee meeting. It's a first quarter review meeting, so it should go fairly quick. Um, let's see, the packets went out to the delegation coordinator yesterday. Um, overall things are good, just uh very busy as usual.
Just a quick thing on that, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. Chuck, I'm gonna give you my proxy for tomorrow. I can't make an eye check inspection. Uh, you'll take that?
Yep, yeah, let Daniel.
I know they were looking, they were concerned about.
Uh, Chuck, would you elaborate a little bit on the first quarter budget review? Is there anything in there that we should be focused on? Or that anybody would be surprised?
So one thing that uh Ken Ken Wilder used to do this when he headed up the, when he was chair for the delegate for the executive committee. Now he's chair for the, you know, delegation as a whole, so he may not mention it, but. The reason why some of the overall expenses from side department are over twenty five percent is because. The benefits drawdowns that happens, you know, so basically, again, we have those separate internal service funds. Because we're self insured for many different benefit types. And so that's like a risk management tool, why we have these separate funds. Because we're, you know, we have to pay for all the, you know, clay dollars upfront. Yes, we might stop lots of access, you know, insurance arrangements. But you saw the page, those claims upfront, claims don't come in a nice even twenty five percent per quarter. So the full budget funding for any benefit lines in the general fund go out as expenses in the first quarter. So that's why departments are looking at your expenses, you know, to date for the first quarter, they're not gonna be this twenty five percent. They're gonna be more than that because the benefits in line expenses are incurred at a hundred percent for the first quarter. Things will level out as we go through. It's more so calling the operating expenses you would hope, you would hope, not necessarily. But you would hope that those would be more aligned towards twenty five percent. So and we do subtotals in those, you know, for each department's expenses. For what's wages or wage related, what's payroll and benefits related, and then what's offering, and the grand total. So usually first quarter, you know, there's, it might just be that announcement. In this case, it'd be Representative Mills that might make that announcement or. President Wilder may might make that announcement. It's also disclaimer or exposure about that. Piece of the benefit line being drawn down a hundred percent actually in the report itself. And I'll be emailing out to the uh commission directors, like the officials who made up departments. I'll be sending out the PDF of of uh the document that uh that commissioners um now have. Um, I'll be sending that after the meeting, so everyone will have those those numbers.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Jumps out on the page is the projects at ninety three percent and that's probably obvious.
Yes, that's also drawn down too because projects don't always incur nice and even twenty five percent during the year. So the full project amount, dislike benefits are transferred out to the capital fund. Um, for Jude to be able to line up and and have, you know, have those projects, you know, get going. Um, and some of those projects are like a phase two as well. So they've already been going on this phase two, phase three might be going on.
But typically, I'm looking at the bottom line, you're at twenty eight cents, you're right there.
Yeah, it's pretty comparable to to nine thirty of twenty three if you look back on the left hand side as far as where we are. So it, you know. I will say that good news on the categorical assistance at the bottom of of the front page on the appropriation summary page. Because our net county cap actually decreased versus the prior year. Like I said, that that's already a known like four hundred thousand dollar, you know, favorable variance that we're gonna have.
And revenues are short because we haven't, taxes aren't collected.
Right, so second quarter, that's gonna change drastically because county taxes due December seventeenth. So those numbers look a lot better, you know, and obviously, like I said, you know, a big portion of the long term care revenue. Is that proportionate share revenue, which unfortunately doesn't come till the last month.
Thank you very much for that update, Chuck, that is very helpful. Um, we have this meeting is a week from Friday, is that right? Okay, great. Laila, anything to add?
Good morning. No, I don't have anything. This will, thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, Sheriff?
Good morning. Um, just I'll assist in our law enforcement partners. Uh, we continue to be extremely busy. Um, and that's about it. And and our scarecrow with the colony of the nursing home. We put a lot of time into that thing, so. Please vote for our scarecrow.
That the Wonder Woman one?
Yep. I signed it to Lieutenant Rick Papalato, so. Let's see, thank you.
All right, Jude.
Good morning. We all put a lot of effort into the scarecrows. I'll tell you, um, the Brentwood newsletter, someone came and took pictures of all of them. And then the newsletter that goes out to all the towns folks, it they they got the pictures of our scarecrows as well. So it's not just the residents. It's also the townspeople and et cetera. Loads of people get a kick out of that every year. It's pretty fun. Um, we have a lot going on too. We have a major repair in the biomass plant today. We'll be shutting down the heat and hot water at ten thirty and hope to have it completed by the end of second shift today. It's a major, major repair. We're pretty excited actually to be taking it on. Um, and while we have the heat down, there's a couple of other ancillary repairs that we'll be taking on. So hopefully, as of tomorrow, we'll be in like really good shape heat wise. Yeah, um, does the board want me to give Dan Weeks a call and tell him no, thank you until after the election? Is that what I gathered?
Uh, we're gonna bring that up in new business and.
Oh, I apologize. On the E S L bid waiver that you granted, and thank you very much for that, I wanted to also point out that. It will, it won't just give give long term care flexibility. We have, as you know, a big H V A C project going on. And when we go to replace the unit for the second floor of Driscoll Building, there's one unit that only does Driscoll to the memory care unit. It'll give us some flexibility that the folks will be able to move down to the first floor and still be absolutely safe. In a secure unit while the the air conditioning is being done on the second floor. So it's it's good in a lot of ways giving us flexibility. Um, I mentioned to you a couple, a few weeks back, working on um the air permit for the emergency generators. Working on an amendment for the biomass, boiler permit, air permit, all those permits came in this past week. It was like so wonderful. Um, that the the permit for the generators, they said it could take up to five months and it was about six weeks. They were very, very helpful with us. So I was really happy about that. And it will help us, you know, continue to move forward with the new building as well. We do not yet have a permit on well number four that we um have some. Maybe not entirely accurate readings. There was an issue with the transducer. I'm trying to figure out exactly what's going on with that. We're pulling everything together the D S is going to need. I I failed to mention to you last week, the fire department did a walkthrough. They have, you know, the whole. The whole department gets together for meetings and they did a walkthrough at the new building. Two Tuesday nights ago and they were very impressed. I spoke to the chief the next day. They had loads of questions and the job super, Bill Conti, had all the answers. They were very well pleased. They had helped us from the very beginning to lay out where the Knox box was gonna go and how the fire panel should be determined. And what the room numbering would even be so that they have an easier time of finding their way through the building. So they were very well pleased with that. And I wanted to let you know. And delegation's getting close. We're getting there. It's looking pretty nice over there, so. Other than that, all is well and thank you.
How do you keep it all in? I know it is, but it's just the mind boggling how you keep track of everything.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jude. Uh, Jason?
Uh, just entering to town to jail, uh, currently sitting one forty in house. Um, our Morris Washman, we use them as well to our, we have two key boxes that are up, so we're working on. Those we're going functioning so we can put our keys in those and don't be carrying keys around anymore. Uh, let's see, the the next Friday, the twenty fifth is um one twenty fourth academy graduation. So since I am the master of ceremonies, I'll be there at that, not make, be able to make the. Quarterly budget, uh, Catherine's gonna make it in my stead, um, because we've also, this academy, I have managed to um. Kind of push uh retired Major Constantino into being the uh the speaker for this academy, which she's. Just be really a lot of fun. Uh, and this is going on. That is, it'll, thanks Chuck, we're gonna meet on next week some point with um Kevin Warwick, who's helped us with grants before and and designing the building. Some specific grants for the programs and some stuff um for the new facility. Well, thank you Chuck and his team. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jason. All right, that concludes the department head updates. Um, and now we have new business, old business. I have two items.
I want to make a mention. All right, you know, I was just thinking about this. Um, I don't know if it's feasible to work on or not, but. We we just heard about the new building and the fire department in Brentwood came over to look at the new building. I'm thinking that because uh the the town of Brentwood doesn't really raise any taxes on the new building at all.
I don't know if it's, we thought everybody were.
Everybody still there? Okay, so my thought was, a- and again, I don't know if it's feasible, it's just initial discussion. You know, I was thinking of, um, you know, if if the county could possibly. Award a small amount of money to the Brentwood Fire Department, um, because if something happens, they've gotta come and deal with the buildings and our people. That that would be a good gesture because we didn't pay any, you know, we didn't pay their uh, we didn't have to go through any permitting or anything like that. So we saved some money there. I guess it'll be future discussion. I guess it'll be a future discussion for, for the next commissioners, but I think that that would be a nice gesture, because again, if we need to rely on them, they're the ones who are coming to rescue people out of that building. So, again, it could be awkward money, whatever, uh, but I wanna just put that out there and lay that on the table.
Thank you.
Really, I mean, like, if we could find some way, like, again, partnership or good. Good neighborly.
Good neighbors will be better for us overall. Uh, do you have anything, Commissioner Coyle? Alright, so I have two items. Uh, first item is, uh, former Commissioner Zambarella reached out to me and has requested that he attend the Years of Service, um, award. It's in his hometown. And, uh, he would like to come, and he would like to pay for his own meal, not looking for us to incur any expense. But because it's close by where he lives and he's familiar with, uh, you know, having been a commissioner for ten years or so. Uh, he, uh, requested to attend. Uh, I would like to suggest that we allow that and accept his money for the, for the extra meal, if that's possible.
I, it's no issue, it's just a matter of, is our number, are our numbers already in? Hence the problem.
The numbers are in, but I could.
Well, yeah, I think.
I could contact them.
Yeah, to see if they can. Yeah, I think that'd be fine, and then he pays his way and that would be good.
I think that's a great gesture, and I would allow that because, you know, Tom's coming in. I, I have full, uh, confidence that Tom will win his election. Uh, so I have no problem with that.
I suggested that we would pay for his meal, but he insisted.
I think.
That, uh, he wanted to pay for it, so that.
He's got plenty of money, he's got plenty of money, let him pay.
Coming out of his campaign fund anyway.
I know he's, I know he's on it.
But, I mean, it raises the point of, do we need to make it available to his, um. The candidate that's running against, because now we're.
Well, is it a campaign thing?
Tom is in a, a unique position. He was formally here. He knows most of the people who are gonna be doing, getting the awards for years of service. He only, he's only had a two-year gap.
Well, you're, but you're, I mean, listen, I fully support Tom coming. But to the extent that you're saying only invite Tom and not invite is no different than this, this issue with the solar pits.
Well, I don't even know the name of the person who's running against him. Would you like to extend an invitation?
Absolutely. That's fine, I just, you know.
And I have no problem with that even.
It just like, if we're.
It's okay. So, just the other candidate?
He wants to come?
Uh, wants to come and pay, then?
Yeah, exactly.
That's fine. Just to be fair. Okay, so you'll let us know, let Tom know if that, if we can add the extra person.
Yes, I probably.
Ask him, maybe, maybe it will be two.
Yeah, I would, they're probably gonna say Friday would be it to know, because they've had, they're pre-buying food and making sure everything's on.
Sure, thank you.
What else you got?
Okay, and the second thing is, uh, the response to, uh, Dan Weeks. I, I wrote this letter, uh, that I thought was appropriate. Uh, I don't know if you wanna change any language. I'll read it. Uh, in response, Dan Mr. Weeks?
I ju, we, we can see it. I don't think you need to.
I, I don't think we need the letter. I think a simple explanation that we don't feel comfortable. They could do it after November, if the election is fine. Uh, but not before the election. I think that's, we'll just leave it at that. I, I mean.
I think that Jude is the person, Jude, if, I mean, I, I, I don't think it's an issue, however, I understand your position. And I think, but the solution is, the call is to Jude. Jude can just say, this is that, we don't need to create acrimony.
No.
Which is, it's like a little incite, your letter seemed to me a little inciting, so.
It is.
Yeah. Okay.
I didn't give.
Anytime after, after the election, if they wanna come back, that's fine.
I'll let him know, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, so now we're up to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I think millionaire Tom Barilla wants to speak.
Uh, just, just thank you folks for that, and have a great day, and it's kinda like golf, whether, so I'm trying to figure my day out.
First things first.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Alright, Tom.
And with that, I, um, move to enter into non-public persons to nine to one eight, phone on three regarding personnel matters.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Commissioner Churchill?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle? And I vote yes. We are in non-public. Thank you very much, everybody. We have returned from our non-public session, and now we'll accept the motion.
So, we had two non-public sessions. I moved to see both those, uh, minutes indefinitely because we can render proposed actions ineffective, and we don't have a finite time on, for the resolution.
Uh, any discussion? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Churchill? And I vote yes.
That, I'm to adjourn.
Commissioner Churchill?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle? I vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.